I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on March 14th at 7:03 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just with liberty and justice for
So this evening, we are going to adjourn to executive session for a discussion on personnel, and I would like a motion to go into it. Mike moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Okay, so we will go down to my office. Hi, everyone. May I have a motion to return to open session? Mike moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Okay, terrific. If there are no objections, I would like to move item number four, discuss and take action on a request from the HHR Committee for special appropriation of 102,500 to fund the engagement of consultants to the next item on the agenda. Any objections?
Nope.
None.
Okay, terrific. Kate, can I turn this over to you?
You can turn it over to me, but I'm going to turn it over to which one of you wants to, do either of you want to discuss it? Henley Homes Memorial Committee has been meeting, and in order to get going, we need to engage certain consultants. We need to get, we want to get a grant consultant. We want to plan for some studies to be done. Surveys need to be updated for all three schools. We need to have some hazardous material testing done, and we're anticipating that the candidates for architects, we're about to put out the RFP, that as part of the selection process, we will ask them to do a project, and I learned a new word in all this, charrette.
Oh, right.
Yeah. So when we did the Ox Ridge project, we did that, and it was very successful, and we paid the finalist a fee for that work. So if you see on the transfer how the money was arrived at, we also have a contingency included in that. So this is just the very first phase, and I will tell you, expect them to be back in short order for the next phase, which would include the architects' fees and some construction manager fees.
Yeah, and these are all, these are all amounts that are not going to be spent right away, but they're all necessary for us to be able to sign contracts with vendors that are all at the front end of the process. Surveyors, hazmat consultants, the grant consultant that'll help us through the state grant process, and the architects as well. So I understand the process, we can't sign those contracts without the funding authorized. So we're asking for the funding for these items now because we hope to have this first batch of vendors online very soon. The architects may, will be a couple weeks down the road, but these other vendors are all going to be online in the next probably two weeks.
So Kate, is it the case that in addition to this, we do like we did last year and appropriate the entire amount for this project for purposes of securing grant funding, just like we did for Ox Ridge?
Yeah, so our, the plan is two more tranches, right?
Correct.
Like another one that will be several million.
Yes.
For the architect, et cetera, and then in June, a number for the full project.
Sixty, seventy million.
Because we have to, that's, you know, not the process that we think is the best, but the state requires an appropriation to be in place in order for them to consider our grant application, so that has to happen by June 30th.
Okay.
So before we come back to you for that amount, you know, the initial, the next request will be for an initial appropriation for bonding, which covers the beginning part of the construction manager fees and the entirety of the architect fees, but we hope by doing that, we'll have the architects semifinal plans, you know, like fairly detailed plans before we have to come to you for the full amount, so that we can get the most accurate cost estimates possible. We're hoping that before we come, you have to come, we'll have the, you know, the charrettes all done, and hopefully the architect selected and updated costs from that architect on whatever the motion there is that's on the cause.
Okay.
This is tracking, the process is tracking what we did with Ox Ridge.
Chris, I have a question. Did you end up getting, interviewing more than one grant consultant?
We have interviewed one, we have a scheduled interview for a second one tomorrow morning. We've got a second proposal. What we did is, is we got a unsolicited proposal from ONG.
Right.
Interviewed them, then at the first meeting, it was suggested that we get a second proposal, which we got from Colliers, which was the grant consultant for Ox Ridge. We got their proposal early, early last week. By the time we got people's schedules coordinated, we're interviewing them tomorrow morning. The goal is to make a recommendation to the committee on Thursday, our next meeting, as to which grant consultant to retain.
Okay, so you're good on that number. Okay, any other questions? Sorry, you won't have any questions.
No, don't have any questions. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
That number is, that's Colliers' proposed number, ONG's a little lower than that.
Right.
We haven't selected one yet.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
Mike, you're good?
Okay. May I have a motion to approve a special appropriation of 102,500 to fund the engagement of consultants for the HHR Building Committee?
So moved.
So moved. Marcy seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Terrific. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
I appreciate it.
We will see you again soon.
Okay, so now we will go back to our regularly scheduled, sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't pass on that one. So next up is the first selectmen's report, and I will, there is a lot, but I will try to go relatively quickly. So on COVID, last week, we did have a jump in positivity rate. It went from 1.62 to 3.88. However, it is still down from the January high of seventeen and a half percent. On March 5th, there was a rally for Ukraine. It took place at Town Hall. It was organized by our resident Dan Goller, and it was well attended by state officials, town leaders, Darien residents, and members of surrounding communities. And everyone did so with the same goal in mind, to acknowledge the unjustified attack on Ukraine and its people that have caused, that's caused so much death and suffering. On kind of more construction oriented, the DOT held a virtual meeting on March 9th regarding a rehabilitation of a bridge, 06821, which carries stormwater under 95 over by exit 10 in Maple Street. Construction is scheduled to begin in the spring of '25. The state will cover the estimated cost of $1.8 million, and there is a 14-day period to submit questions or comments, and the appropriate links are on the town website. The Norotan and West Avenue intersection improvement, you've heard me speak about this a few times, I'm pleased to announce the bidding process has concluded, and the lowest responsible bidder is during construction out of Norwalk. The project is funded by a $1.2 million lots of grant, and work could start there as early as May 1st. We did a tour of the schools this week, this Saturday, and the tour of the seven schools with the Board of Finance, the RTM Education Committee, and the RTM F&amp;B Committee. I'd like to thank Mike Lynch, the Board of Education Facilities Director, and the principals at each school for facilitating the tours. A great deal of our budget is allocated to our schools, so it's important for those in charge of approving the funds to have direct information about the capital projects. Zoning, I submitted testimony today on House Bill 5429. This is a very concerning bill because its passage would allow as-of-right development within a half-mile radius of any passenger rail or commuter rail station. And in Darien, this will, could impact six different rail stations, the two in Darien and four additional ones that are within a half-mile radius of our town. The impact from this bill will be felt throughout our community, including those in working class or middle-class housing. These are houses that are in the 800 to 1,500 square feet, and our zoning allows housing on one-fifth of an acre. And the, the problem is that a lot of people that are in these homes can't afford new construction at current prices, and this bill would allow that home to be replaced for, for instance, a six-unit apartment building with one affordable unit, but that will damage our current affordable working-class housing. The proposed bill has an effective date of October 1st of '22, which in my opinion is, is being rushed. Definitions of key elements, including minimum overall average gross density and as-of-right development are missing, and as-of-right development within a half-mile radius of train stations could occur on land that's not zoned residential. All of these are detrimental to town, and I will be continuing to closely monitor this bill, as will the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm cutting this short, but my testimony is on our website. I'd like to also thank the Park and Rec Commission for submitting testimony on Bill HB 5254. This would limit the right of Darien to establish different fees for residents and nonresidents for public parking at our beaches. The cost to operate our beaches is far higher than the seasonal operating expenses, which includes amenities, insurance, and staff, and significant capital expenses. All of these expenses are borne by Darien taxpayers. All visitors are welcome to our beaches and parks either by walking in or ride-sharing, and the Darien Park and Rec Commission sells a seasonal pass to residents or charges a daily parking pass for nonresidents. This bill if passed would significantly expand demand for parking at our beaches and permits. We must acknowledge that residents are funding the cost of the operations that I just mentioned, and special projects through the property taxes they pay, and thus, local residents should receive priority for parking. Again, this bill is also on our website, if you want to take a look. Today, from 10 o'clock until noon today, a mediation session was held between the town of Darien and Eversource. Included in the mediation were representatives from the town, Eversource, and DOT, Department of Transportation. Representing Darien was myself, Town Attorney Wayne Fox, Director of Public Works Ed Gentile, John Sarkowski, Highway Supervisor, and Mike Cotta, Darien's Tree Warden. The first selectman and her team are working on behalf of area residents to appeal to the Mott mediator to require Eversource to save as many trees and shubs as possible. During the meeting, Eversource was open to expanding their original planting plan and demonstrated a willingness to help protect new plantings to encourage their survival. Including in this was their positive response to installing the planting cloth to keep weed growth down, and also, I have to say it, the diaper bag around the trees. That was Kate's idea.
Her pants.
Over the next few days, the town representatives will be developing a proposal to send to the PURA mediator. The proposal will include requesting more frequent tree trimming by Eversource versus full tree removal, and requesting that Eversource begin its tree work on the Department of Transportation right away. This would allow more time for the town to finalize our planting plans and to protect the existing trees through the summer and into the fall, when the new plantings can be installed. As information is, becomes available, as we have been doing, it'll be posted to the town website. I am happy to announce that the Darien Police Department will have its first female captain. The Darien Police Commission announced the promotion of Lieutenant Allison Hudema to the rank of captain effective March 20th of this year. And that is my full report. Thank you.
Just one comment, you're right, very full, very busy period of time. I just wonder, when you're called upon to submit testimony, is there a process? I read, I read it when I got it on the train, you know, coming, coming home, but in order to support the positions taken in testimony in the future, can there be ability to see it before it's submitted? I understand, and it may not be a thing for the board, it may just be a selectmen thing, and it's a busy weekend, a mediation all day today. I'm sure your schedule is incredibly, you know, busy, but I also think submission of testimony is, is a significant event, and I, I would certainly be appreciative of having a little bit of notice that something like that's going to be submitted. I'm not saying I agree or disagree with anything that is in the letter, I'm sure it's very well thought out.
You just want to see it ahead of time? Sure.
Okay.
I'll show you ahead of time, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I encourage everyone to pay attention to what is happening in town, and if you want to submit testimony, you can do it, you can submit it in writing, or you can, I think Steve Olveany actually was giving testimony today live. I was not because I was on Littlebrook, working on trees. So, Kate, do you have anything?
Just real quick, we've been spending a lot of time answering questions about the ARPA appropriation and the budget for the various boards that are addressing it now. In positive news, the senior center will be bringing the lunch program back inside beginning in April. We've been working, helping to get the HHR Committee up and running, and to our parkers, please display your 2022 permit. If you don't display your 2022 permit, you are likely to get a ticket.
Good to know. Okay, and now we'll move on to board liaison reports, and I'll just start with Mike.
Yes, the late committee met last Wednesday. We have currently, one, two, three, four, five, six, we have seven properties that are right now on our radar that are in various stages, whether it's in the complaint stage or the fine accrual stage, and some, there are two that are in the position where there's actual liens being attached, which means obviously, at a time that a party tries to dispose of that property, they're not going to be able to until that lien is, is satisfied. There is one property in particular, we may have an opportunity to discuss this in the future, that the liens are so, excuse me, longstanding and significant. One of the things that the town has the ability to do is actually to foreclose on a lien, which isn't something you do lightly. I think it's also something for town council to discuss, but it's also something, excuse me, in our arsenal, if you will, and a choice that we have to make in the future. But that, those are the things that are going on with the, the group right now.
Mike, do you want to speak to what happens with taxes?
Well, usually, if there are, you know, taxes on a property, and if it's in foreclosure, then the, the bank, the lender who was foreclosed, should be paying those taxes. And indeed, there are situations where, with regard to the particular blight issue on the outside, the loan servicer should be working with us to actually cure that, and they would pay for the trees to be cut back, or for garbage to be removed, and, excuse me, and Robert is, is working, there are two situations where those houses are in foreclosure, and the banks are the responsible party, so we're trying to see if we can't get those problems cured through the bank.
Okay. Terrific. And Sarah is, has a couple of committees.
I do, I have an update tonight for the HHR Building Committee, the Thriving Youth meeting this week, so at the next meeting, I'll be able to give that update. The HHR Building Committee has been meeting for the past several Thursdays. The committee's putting together an RFP for an architect for the project. The committee is hiring a grant consultant, which you heard about tonight, to assist with the process to file the state grant paperwork by June 30th, and given our tight timeline, it's helpful to have that consultant. Tonight, there's a request for appropriation for the Board of Selectmen, which we appreciate that was approved. Tomorrow, we will go before the Board of Finance. We'll begin discussions on an RFQ for a construction manager, started to form subcommittees to focus on funding approvals, communications, et cetera. Residents can find our agendas and meeting minutes on the town website, and our next meeting is this Thursday evening.
So they're weekly right now?
Right now, they're weekly. We believe that they're going to be weekly for quite a bit, probably until the June 30th deadline. There's a lot to be done, and I assume that after that, it'll be a little bit less, maybe biweekly.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. And Thriving Youth next time.
Yep, our meeting is, is coming Thursday.
Okay. John?
My two committees are ARPA and the IT Steering Committee, so on ARPA, we haven't met since we've submitted all of our recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. As you know, it's gone on to the Board of Finance, and they are looking at those now. I forget exactly what the timeline is, but very shortly, they're going to consider and likely approve those ideas, based on what I'm hearing. We've considered whether further public discussion is needed, and have so far decided against having an incremental public hearing over all this, given that the ARPA committee, I think, met something like seven times, and all of those meetings were televised, and all of those meetings had space for public comment. I'm still mindful of suggestions from the public, that we would take those at any time. I would just point out that right now, the ARPA committee's not scheduled to meet anymore since we finalized our recommendations, and that in the upcoming meetings, either with the Board of Finance or with the RTM, to the extent the public has input, that they should provide that directly to those, to those entities. On the IT Committee, we're only meeting once a month, and right now, as I think I mentioned the last meeting, Jeff Adams is pulling together an education pact, just for lack of a better term, to make sure that the very qualified experts we have on this committee are briefed on how things are today, so that they have a good starting point to try and help shape a strategy that could be beneficial to, to the town in terms of its IT needs. So more to come on that, but that's my update.
Okay. Marcy?
Sure. Ox Ridge Building Committee met on March 9th, and good news is things are still working on schedule. They have put on our radar that obviously, as the volatility of the supply chain and inflation has happened, that there could be some, some areas in which, when they're putting in the new assembly wing, that there could be some increases or some delays in some of the processes. If there's anything over 10% of an increase, they have to come back to the board and look to have that approved. As of right now, all of that funding would come out of contingency. There is a little bit of overtime that has happened, not substantial, that directly went out of trade allowances. In terms of contingencies, things are on board as of right now, there has not been any significant increase. They did some really well planning coming into this board, you know, and halfway through after they've done it. There was an issue with roofing a bit at the beginning of, of, of building, and instead of roofing was delayed for the first wing, the academic wing, and they knew that that was going to be in the pipeline, so they did order roofing for the assembly, which won't be, you know, to be able to utilize for another 12 months before they need it. However, they knew that that was going to be something that was on their radar. So this, this, this organization, this committee has done a really good job on, on doing some foresight to make sure that we aren't, aren't really highly impacted by the inflation, but there is, that did come on the radar, that's the first time we've had that conversation, that there is a possibility that in a month's from time, these might be some conversations that we have to have.
I was really impressed at the tour when they said they are 79% complete.
They are.
That's a very specific.
It was 76 two weeks ago, now it's up to 79. The reports are beautiful.
Really? That is really pretty incredible.
That's the latest, any questions?
Any questions? No? Okay, great reports, thank you. Kate, do we have any comments? Public comments or email?
No.
No? Okay, so now we will move to new business. First item is discuss and take action on a request to approve the annual sidewalk sales, and Kate will explain this.
So I don't think you've approved anything like this yet, but you do approve events, use of town, property use of town roads. So the sidewalk sales, they're asking for July 14th through the 16th. It does involve the closing of Day Street. Police Commission has approved it, and the Planning and Zoning Department issued their typical letter regarding the regulations around it, so all that's left for you to do is to give your blessing for them to use the sidewalks, to have the sidewalk sales.
You know, I noticed that Jeremy had, it seems like he had some concerns about stores that weren't signed up and were, is that?
That's something that's been in this letter every year, for as long as I can remember.
Okay.
Because it apparently does happen on occasion that stores that are not members of the chamber, put, attempt to have sidewalk sales as well, and this permission is specific to the members of the chamber. So that's.
That's just language.
Yeah, I mean, it's come up in the past about, you know, how people feel about that, but because of the liability, we don't allow it.
Right. Kate, is this, is this the same weekend as New Canaan?
I have no idea.
Any discussion, any questions? No? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the annual sidewalk sale? Mike moves. Sarah seconds, all in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and approve the proposed streetlight policy. And this was a policy that we discussed, oh, I think.
At your last meeting.
Was it at the last one? Okay.
Yep.
And Mike actually gave us some really helpful edits, and, which I see are incorporated. Does anyone have any questions on this? I have a question. So going to number seven, item, streetlight evaluation. So to determine if an area should have streetlight addition, removal, or relocation, the Department of Public Works will also consider the following: nighttime business, traffic volume, and accident history in the area. I, I would like that to be defined a little bit more. So for instance, accident history, how far back are we looking? Are we looking at five years, at 10 years? And I, I don't have a specific number in mind, I just want it to be a little tighter. And I really like the input from abutting property owners, because I have read other complaints where some residents think a light is a great idea, and other residents end up not in favor of that. So getting that sorted out beforehand, I think, is a great idea.
Monica, to your, your point on accident history in the area, what if we wrote relevant accident history in the area, and that way, you can consider the type of accidents you're looking at, and what, in your discretion is a relevant, is a relevant time period, which, you know, might, might be five years, but that can be in your discretion, as opposed to looking at the full available history, or accident history, you know, related to lighting, as opposed to accidents that are just happening for other factors? So maybe just the insertion of, of that word could help, unless, unless you had a, like a particular amount of years or something in mind?
I still want years.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the relevant, I, I see where you're going there.
How far back would you want to?
I think time of day is an important issue, when you kind of look at that too, though, you also want to make sure that if it's a streetlight we're discussing, and this is happening at 10 o'clock in the morning, well, streetlight is not a.
Not an issue.
Not an issue, but.
I, in my litigation experience, when we ask for discovery about history, it's usually
it's usually three years.
Three years?
And someone asks for five, we usually scream and yell about that. But three is pretty generic.
So if somebody sued over an accident, because there wasn't a streetlight, you'd go back three years to look and see for relevant?
Right.
Okay.
Like if you would say, oh, you know, I want the heat, maintenance history for three years, I want the accident history for three years. Whatever it was involving the situs of an accident, it's usually, three years is usually adequate, you know, look. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't do risk assessment, but...
If that's a standard, that'd be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I see where you're, I see where you're thinking there, but I look at this as more of, residents will want to have this information to justify having a light there, or maybe they're fighting their neighbor who wants to have a light there. So I'm not looking at it so much from a litigation point of view as much as background information, so... I'm going to stick with five, if you're okay with that.
Sure. Yeah.
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how about relative accident history in the area for the past five years? And that takes care of the whole daylight versus evening?
Yeah. I think that relevance is a great addition. Okay. Okay. Any other additions? Sarah, you're good? Okay. Okay, so we will hold off on next, Kate, or can we?
Sure. If that's the only change, if you're all comfortable, I would say no reason not to adopt it as you revised it tonight.
Okay. So if everybody's comfortable?
Sure.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the proposed streetlight policy as amended?
So move.
Mike moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Okay, terrific. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request for use of town parking spaces for outdoor dining. And Kate, will you go over this?
Yep. All right, so one thing I put at your place is tonight, a revised resolution. Mike made some suggestions for edits. So since the start of the pandemic, each summer, we have allowed the bodega and the goose to utilize the parking spaces immediately behind their buildings. And you could see in your packet, there was a picture that showed which ones we were talking about. And they've been allowed to set up an outdoor dining area there. The bodega has requested permission to do so again this summer. They have received approval from Planning and Zoning. They need your approval as the parking authorities, since those are town parking spaces. We have not charged them the last two summers. And my feeling, my recommendation to you is that as we're still coming out of the pandemic to allow the use without rent again this year, I'm hoping that next year, we're in a different position. And, you know, there are, there may be legislation coming down that would impact this as well, but... So next year's another year. Don't think about that now. But what this resolution does is allows you, the Board, the Board of Selectmen authorizing the first selectman in conjunction with the appropriate authorities, meaning Planning, Zoning, building if necessary, Health Department if necessary, to authorize the use of those parking spaces for whichever building or public, I should say, business entity requests permission. Any questions, discussion?
Kelly? Oh, sorry. The only question I had is, was in regard to, and I see it says it's only affecting five municipal parking spaces, no handicap spaces are impacted.
It's not the, yeah, the handicap spaces are not...
Where are they?
Where are the handicap?
Yeah, it doesn't even...
They're over, that one doesn't show it so well. Handicap spaces are down over in here.
Okay.
So bodega would only impact if the goose comes in and asks as well. It impacts the whole line.
That little corridor, okay.
Which is what they did last year.
Yes, which is what they did.
So it's that whole strip, but none of them are handicapped?
None of them are handicapped.
Okay.
So my only comments are, last year, happy to approve. I love the idea of this, I think people very much enjoy it. It's a lovely thing to be able to go down there, everyone's outside, it's great. They took a little more space, and I think we just need to be able to go back and double check on it. They took the side spots where it said the 12 by 16...
The side spots are impacted, yeah.
Yes. And they had put concrete barriers, you know, at least one of them should be taken, but they had taken all three of them. So I think at some point, we just need to make sure exactly how many spots are being taken. It really was that entire rectangle that was kind of out of use. You really couldn't park, because the goose had also put out, and I think theirs was a little bit larger and came out a little bit farther than maybe the side. And look, we want people to be happy and out there and comfortable, but this is our property, and I think we just need to be very clear as to the sides.
The safety impact, like certainly going around that little bit.
Yeah, it really is that entire kind of triangle that's...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, triangle.
So my comment or question, is there a reason why, instead of having it be an annual board vote, that we have it be designated to the first selectman? Is that, I mean, is that how it was done last year?
It's how it was done last year, you know, for one, right now, they need special permission from Planning and Zoning to have outdoor dining like that. So you could vote to say, we're good with it for the next five years, but Planning and Zoning may not.
Right, but we could vote on it on an annual basis?
Yes. Yeah.
So I, I mean, I would just, has nothing to do with competency or the weight of the issue. I just, as a general matter, things that are board votes, I'm reticent to give them up is, or not have them be board votes.
Right, but this is just a one year.
Right, well...
One season even. It expires, the authority to do this expires in October. Are you looking to have us come back for each business entity that comes before? I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand what you're...
Actually, actually, yes. I mean, if they're, if they want to come, it, well, first, there maybe should be a deadline for them to apply for this. So you're not doing it ad sereata, like every six weeks or every time a business decides they want to do that. There should be a deadline, hey, if you want to renew, you should put in your renewal application by such and such date.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
But I, I just don't want to give up the right to review. If we're the parking authority, if the board is, then I feel like we should vote on these matters. I mean, obviously, Monica's going to do the right thing. I mean, that's not the issue, to me, it's just, that's what my issue is.
Yeah. So I think absolutely you could do that, you know, we just changed the resolution slightly. The reason in prior years that we had done it this way was timing, to allow us to make the moves quickly, knowing that in all likelihood, the second request was going to follow on the first, but needing the, you know, ability to move quickly. So I think because we're early, maybe that's not necessary. If the board wants to have, you know, any further requests come back, limit this to the one that has already come before you.
I'm fine with that.
And take out the last, the last, you know, now therefore, and limit the preceding resolution to specifically for the bodega.
And we meet every two weeks, that should be fast enough to cover this, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So I think, let's take out the whereas about multiple applications. And let's just authorize for selectmen to work, grant permission to the, to the town property by, somewhere in there, we need to put in, by the bodega.
Or behind, but who?
Well, we want to specifically, it's their request that we want to...
What is? She said it's directly behind bodega.
It's directly behind bodega, yes. So the use of the town property, directly behind the bodega, and use being limited to the bodega. And then we'll take off the rest of it. Town property and parking areas, and parking spaces.
Okay, Kate, can you read that again?
Yeah, hang on a second, I'm still thinking.
Okay.
Okay. So I think if we're limiting it to that, so I would change that, we eliminate the last part of the resolution.
So we strike the second to last paragraph?
We strike the one that now further be resolved, that one.
Right. The second to last?
I thought that was the last.
That is the last one.
That is the last one. Okay. So it's, when we get to the now therefore, the very, the first one that says now therefore be, it is hereby resolved.
Right.
That the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town and acting in its capacity as the parking authority of the town, authorizes the first selectman, acting in conjunction with the Health Department, Fire Marshal, and appropriate zoning officials to authorizing, grant permission for the use of town property and parking spaces directly behind the bodega, said use being limited to the bodega for these outdoor activities to take place.
And then delete the last paragraph.
And then delete the last paragraph.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay. Do we, is there any additional discussion? No? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the use of town parking spaces for outdoor dining resolution as amended? Mike moves? Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is number five. We did four. May I have a motion, well, it's to reappoint, the reappointment of town council. Is there any discussion? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the reappointment of Wayne Fox as town council for a term expiring May, March 31st, 2024? Mike moves? Marcy seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Wayne, for all your good work. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of the February 28th, 2022, regular meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, any additions? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is agenda review. Are there any topics that board members would like to see on future agendas?
I would like to know when we would be having a discussion on the community values, if we've heard back from any of our residents about that, and if we can have a further discussion on the DEI conversation.
Okay, well, I think what we are going to work on, I think we agreed to work on the community values, and I think that that is a, could be a robust discussion. Has anybody received any comments?
We've received, we emailed a few.
A few? Okay. All right, so let's put that on the agenda for our next meeting? Can we do that?
If you would like, yes.
Okay. And our next meeting is March 14th.
No, that's...
No, it's today.
Today.
That is today, wow. Time does not fly.
March 28th.
For 28th? Okay. Our next meeting is March 28th. And Kate, you want to give us a reminder on the quarterly? The department head?
Quarterly department heads will be in April. So, let's see, your meeting on April 4th, so the 19th?
Okay. So I'd ask everybody to put that on your calendar. That is a morning meeting, and, and it starts early, Mike.
Yes.
And it's very informative, so I hope everybody can make it. And the department heads do put in a lot of work doing their quarterly reports. So they try to keep the meeting to event, to items that are new since they created the report, or items that, that really jump out, that they really feel that they need to stress. So the reports themselves are very helpful.
Yeah, we've tried, I think staff did a really good job at the last meeting with cutting down on the time that the reporting, that part of the meeting takes place. And then we do try and keep your business part very short, understanding that we're taking a big chunk out of everybody's day.
What time will that meeting be starting?
See, you got to read the whole thing, you know, like, the business meeting, we always give an estimate of, the regular meeting starts at 8:30. The joint departments start at 8:30. We try to give an estimate of when the business meeting will start for the people who don't really care what the department heads are saying. So we'll, we'll make that more clear.
You might phrase that slightly differently. We do care, it's just a very...
Not you, I mean, the general public who don't, you know, who are turning in for the business part.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so we have that cleared up. So may I have a motion to adjourn? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Productive meeting.